Ms. Chair, is your microphone on?
There you go.
There we go. Sorry. Wait, we now have the roll call, please.
President.
President.
Commissioner Verba has an excused absence. It's Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Bunch.
Good evening.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Here.
And Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. So it's now time to elect Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for 2024. So let's open up nominations. Are there any nominations for the position of Chair?
I nominate Joanne Miller.
Well, I will accept the nomination. Is there any more nominations for the Chair?
I nominate Joanne Miller.
I thirded.
Okay. Well, the nominations are now closed. And we will now go into vote. So if there's only one person that been nominated, is there unanimous consent for Chair? Thank you. Alrighty. So now we go on to the nominee. Oh, I'm sorry. We will now vote on the position of Co-Chair. Vice Chair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Did I miss something?
I think we still need to have a vote for the Chair.
Okay. Well, we need a vote. All those in favor of Joanne Miller, myself serving to continue to serve as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then I have been re-elected as Chair again. Thank you. So thanks for catching that, David. Let's move on to the election of Vice Chair. Is there nomination for a Vice Chair?
I nominate Stacy.
Stacy, are you willing to accept that?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. So we will now vote on the Vice Chair. All those in favor of Stacy Bartholomew serving as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Stacy. You're now the Vice Chair. Thank you. Alrighty, let's move into the approval of the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Make a motion to approve?
I move we approve the December 18, 2003 meeting minutes as written.
My second.
Take a vote. All those in favor of the meeting's been approved, say aye.
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 Opposed? Have been approved. David, do you want to?
Yeah. Good evening, folks. I'm David Martino. I'm the current Planning Manager here for the City of Albany. We have two public hearings here tonight, and they have to do with amendments to the Development Code. So some have to do with floodplains, and others have to do with other minor amendments throughout the code. I think that there's a number of folks that are here tonight that wanted to talk about middle housing or the 80 Townhouse Project up off of Gibson Hill up in North Albany. This is not the right meeting if you wanted to do that. You're welcome to stay, but there is a meeting that's scheduled for Wednesday, May 15, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM down at the Rear Front Community Center. And that will be an opportunity to learn about middle housing. To then, the City Manager will be there, Peter Troetzen, our Development Director. Matthew Redkris will be there. Myself, I think Anne will be there. And we'll be on hand to talk about middle housing and then go over what it is and what it isn't, and then take questions and answers for the rest of the session. We can ask him if he wants, if he can be there, but I don't know that for a fact.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll be in it.
They can attend if they choose to. We wouldn't recommend a quorum, however, because then that would be a public meeting that would be a Planning Commission meeting, and it wouldn't be appropriate to have too many people there for a quorum. And I gotta say, though, that our Planning Commission, with the way the middle housing state mandates work, the Planning Commission unfortunately has no role in regulating the placement of middle housing. It's a state mandate. Any appeals to that state mandate or to an approved middle housing plan division goes to a body called the Referee, which can be a hearings examiner. But none of our Planning Commission members or our council members are able to participate in such hearings. This is something that the state has mandated, that we have to provide, and that's what it is. Counselor?
Business of the public?
We do. And in fact, we'll start that. I just wanted to preface it, though, by trying to clarify what this meeting is or isn't about tonight. But you're welcome to test or to comment.
Opportunity to be heard by the Planning Commission.
Sure.
For that, it's not out of place.
No, absolutely not. And I would recommend a three-minute time limit, though, just to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. We can talk about that at the meeting on the 15th. Yes, so the referee cannot be a city employee nor the city attorney. And so our Community Development Director will have a referee appointed, probably an attorney from another community, perhaps Corvallis or Salem. I'm sorry, what?
That person will be at that meeting on the 15th?
Uh, no.
It tends to be in the 50th, as I understand it. Best for referee.
If an appeal gets filed, that's when the city would appoint a referee to weigh the evidence and render a decision. So the description for how to file an appeal would be found on the notice of decision. And if you haven't received it, please leave me your address or email, and I'm happy to send you a copy of that, because the directions for that are in that notice. Now, this is a staff level, and it's not even considered a land use decision. So that's why it doesn't go to the Planning Commission. So anyway, at this point, if you wanted to open up the floor for business in the public.
Always forget to turn it back on. Thank you. Yeah, we are happy to hear from you, whatever concerns you have. This is the point in the meeting that we do take comments from the public. I do have a list that people have signed up, so I will call you in order. And feel free to come and speak, and time limited to three minutes. So Carrie Hoffen?
Hofer.
Hofer. Sorry, Carrie. Carrie Hofer. Come forward and have a seat. Yep. Do we need to have their name officially spelled so we have it for the record?
I think so. That would be appropriate.
Right. Hi, I'm Carrie Hofer. Nice to meet you guys.
Spell your last name, please.
H-O-F-F-E-R.
Thank you.
Yep. The only question was the one that I asked is how do we get a referee here so we can do a referral and have a meeting by then? It sounds like what we have to do is start on the 15th, get that process started. Is that correct?
This is more information for me as well. So hearing that that is the date.
Yes, right.
And staff.
And feel free to share comments, but the Planning Commission really can't respond to those since they don't have any jurisdiction in these middle housing cases.
But just so we can hear your concern. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you. Lorraine Johnson? And Lorraine, please spell your name for the record. Thank you.
Okay. My concern is, as I end up, and of course, the way it sounds, that there's nothing you can do here. But concerning, okay, the date is coming up real shortly that we have to have this response in. So if we wait till the 15th, which I think, I think the date is like the 18th or the 19th or the 16th or something like that, I mean, it's a real close date from here.
Sorry, but do you mind if I jump in? So the meeting on the 15th is an informational meeting.
Right.
It's not a meeting where an appeal would be filed. There's, there are some specific directions on how to file an appeal, but the 15th is really simply a chance to learn about it and to ask questions about it.
I understand that. But what date does the appeal have to be?
I'd have to look on the notice of decision. I'm thinking it's probably around the, see, the decision was issued the 8th, so about May 18th or so would be the deadline.
Yeah, like I say, it's like soon.
It is.
It's like soon. Yeah. So that was my concern. My concern is too, and I ended up thinking, you know, they talk about, you know, the flooding and issues like that. They have set up their flood area for this housing development, for 22 housing with your roof and your, you know, you know, they do their calculations with your roof space and your, and your solid space for groundwater to determine how big of a ponding basin that you need. Well, they're going from 22 houses to 80 houses. So that roofing amount is going to be way over what that ponding basin is going to be able to handle. So what is the city going to do when we have issues that there's going to be flooding on North Albany Road? There's going to be, there's going to be traffic issues because there's no way. There's one way in and one way out of that street. When you start putting 80 houses there next to it, there's, it's going right into it. That's going to be probably another 80 houses. Then you have behind it is a little smaller part, say it even goes to 40 houses or 80 houses, something like that. How is all that going to get out onto one street? Because you start talking 80-some houses, yeah, you figure they were telling me 40, 40-some car trips in the evening, but that's not realistic because most households have two people that drive that get to work. And I'm saying if you only have one of those people in each house, well, that's 80 trips in the morning, 80 trips at night that you're talking about. So there's, you know, how is that going to work? You know, it's, I mean, so as a city, what is the city itself going to do when we end up having these here really bad issues?
Thank you for your comments. Next is Trevor Lee.
Good evening. I am also here to discuss the proposed affordable housing, middle-class housing. So my name is Trevor Lee, L-E-E. I live on Gibson Hill Road, and I would like to voice my opinion on the Planning Commission over the Riverwood Crossing subdivision on Gibson Hill Road. So the state has passed the House Bill 2001 to try and make, to make more affordable housing in the state. Yes, the state has a housing crisis. But what I don't think people realize is that the developers are using this as a way to make more money. So if you start out with sending a bid to the city saying, we're going to put in 22 houses, and then decide, well, we can use this House Bill to put in 80 townhomes, you're going to make a lot more money with that. They don't care, they don't care about the safety of the pedestrians that are on that busy street. They don't care about the traffic that comes in and over the bridge. The developers aren't from Albany, they're from Salem. Why do they care? They just want to build this and use the state's House Bill to get in more townhomes. With that being said, I mean, the 80 townhomes, that's just in one section of North Albany on Gibson Hill. You have multiple other subdivisions that are being, that are going in on 24th. And then you have, the city has the lot that's down there just right there by West Thornton Lake that, who knows, they could take middle housing and put in 300 cottages or 300 townhomes. I mean, you're adding that much more to the area without anyone planning on upgrading the roads, the traffic, the in and out, the accessibility. I mean, you can exit going on Gibson Hill, you can only go down Scenic to get to Highway 20 or down North Albany Road. Your only other exit's going to go out towards Independence Highway. I mean, what if there's an emergency? What is, what is everyone going to do? Especially with the fire department that responds to a lot of calls from up on Gibson Hill Road, going back into downtown, they're going to have a heck of a time just trying to cross a bridge, especially at 5 o'clock when the traffic is there. So I just wanted to voice my opinion of this middle housing that is going to be such a problem. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott. Sorry, Scott, I can't pronounce your last name. I can't read it.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Letman, 100 Ferry Street, Northwest Albany, Oregon. I'm here just to speak to what the purpose of, I think, the meeting is, and that is the code amendment changes that are proposed. And I've talked with the, I have a planner that works for me on staff full-time, and I have a consultant planner. And what they recommended that I do is ask for a continuance. So we could, because I think we just got this material a week ago, I believe.
Chair, may I speak?
Yes.
So, yes, that's possible. But we're still just dealing with business in the public. So if you have testimony that you wanted to present during that hearing, that would be the time to do it, which will be just shortly.
Okay. I apologize.
No problem, Scott. We've got a lot going on tonight, right? Anyone else just want to make any comments? Yes. I thought I did. Did I miss two? Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Brad Dennis. I'm sorry, Brad. I totally did not see those printed names. Regize Brad.
So I'll try and keep this away from middle housing and more to maybe the concept of the Planning Commission. And we had a group of North Albany residents who met two weeks ago tonight at the fire station in North Albany. We had our state representative, Shelley Bossart-Davis, there. We realize this is a state law. Yes, consideration is being given to refer the House Bill 2001 to the vote of the people in the State of Oregon. It takes 117,000 signatures, which is a pretty big lift. But the biggest concern with the neighbors is not so much that there's more people wanting to move to North Albany. It's that the infrastructure's not there for the traffic. I don't know about sewers. I've lived in my home on North Albany Road since 1983. I've been there 40 years. I went through the annexation vote when we were promised RS 10 for the zoning as a condition for voting to join the city. One question I have for you who are just members of the Planning Commission, would you raise your hand if you do not live in the City of Albany? And for city staff, would you raise your hand if you do not live in the City of Albany?
I don't think that's a fair question. You're here to provide comments to the Planning Commission.
All right.
All of our Planning Commission members must live in the city. That's how they end up getting appointed.
Very good. So all of us who live in North Albany, we've got, definitely have skin in the game. I know that to work for the city, you do not have to live in the city. So again, our concern is the infrastructure, the overloads on North Albany Road, Gibson Hill Road, Scenic, West Thornton Lake, Metky. I've, I don't know if it would be appropriate if you would be interested in seeing comments that were submitted through Facebook to our, to our Facebook group. I have packets for everybody if you'd like to see, to kind of get a flavor of the concerns over the infrastructure. And I've got packets if that would be appropriate to give them to you. I don't know who.
Provide them over to our assistant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And Audrey Eldridge? Yeah, I was waiting for Audrey. Yeah, after Audrey Eldridge.
Thank you. My name is Audrey Eldridge. And E-L-D-R-I-D-G-E. And I'm going to revise my comments a little bit because I know that our, this meeting is not going to be addressing everything, but I did want to share with you information I've received from ordinance number 5698, which was effective January 14, 2022, that housing needs vary. This is from the City of Albany. Currently, many people are paying too much for the housing they have and are limited to renting or buying detached, single-unit homes. Small families, young adults, and growing population of elderly need housing options that offer smaller footprint, lower maintenance, and easier access to public transportation, services, and social opportunities. Those options are generally not available in neighborhoods composed exclusively of single detached housing and require high maintenance and transportation costs. Well, my comment is, in our area where these middle housing options are being looked at right now, there's no public transportation, and there's no services, and very little social opportunities. It is not a walkable area. The closest grocery store is over a mile and a half away. And that includes a very long and steep hill. Therefore, some of these reasons why, you know, city included in their reasoning for middle housing, which of course is a state mandate, I understand that, but the city should at very least add back bus services to that area. If you're going to allow dense development, you should provide the services that are necessary for that area. I have a couple of other comments in the handout that I shared with your staff. And I do understand that, and I was very pleased to see that, Goal One of your citizen involvement policy, making, when making land use and other planning decisions, the citizen involvement program, which will actively seek input for all decisions, utilizing criteria relevant to the issue and ensure the long-range interest of the general public are then considered. Give particular attention to input provided by the public and where opposing viewpoints are expressed. Attempt to reach consensus where possible. And so my mistake, if I thought that this was going to apply to this meeting, but I think it applies to all of us, and I'd like to share that with you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward and say your name and spell it for the record.
I'm really new at this, okay? So I'm just learning. Could you tell me what your job descriptions are?
We need to have your name and spell it for the.
Well, my name is Emily May, and I live in North Albany. What's your job descriptions?
We're here to take public comment. It's not, it's not a question and answer session right now.
That isn't, no, 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 no. I'm asking what your job description is because I don't know. So tell me what your job description is. You're saying you're the Planning Division. What is your job description?
Commission.
We're the Planning Commission, not the Planning Division.
Oh, Planning Commission, okay. What is your job description now? Because that says to me that you have control over the planning, that name. What do you have control over?
Okay, David. Please address the Planning Commission. This is our chair right here. She's happy to help you answer those questions. These are volunteers from all walks of life.
I'm asking what your job is. I mean, it seems to me that we're sitting here asking questions about things that you don't have the answers to. So maybe we're talking to the wrong people, but what is your job description? If we're talking to the wrong people and you're the planning group, who do we talk to?
Well, it didn't.
Yeah, my name's Emily. I'm saying no.
Our speaker's not working.
Oh, your speaker's not working.
Okay, now you can hear me, sorry. It was blinking green, then it went back. Okay. So there is a description of the Planning Commission on the city's website. You can direct your comments to the state legislature. The middle housing was a state mandate. We did go through a long public process to determine areas that we could customize to the city. It was a very limited, I mean, very few things were able, were we able to deviate from state law? I mean, there's, it's very prescriptive state law, and we didn't create the state law. The Planning Commission and the City Council had, we had, we had public hearings. We had, we had actually some different focus groups. We did quite a bit of stuff. They, they do review land use decisions. They do review changes to the Development Code, changes to the comprehensive plan, to the zoning. They do have opportunities to help in the planning for the city. So back when there was a North Albany area plan that was done, I was here. And by the way, I live in the city, I just want to say that. Anyway, the Planning Commission does have a role, and they advise the City Council. So some of the land use decisions that they are able to oversee, and middle housing is not one of them, they end up being able to be the final decision-maker. But when it comes to any changes to our legal documents, the Development Code, zoning map, comprehensive plan map, those, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council.
Who protects the people that already live here, besides the police? I mean, who protects the ordinances or protects the people from contractors causing damage to other homes and infrastructure? Who protects them?
These are really good questions for the meeting on Wednesday. Tonight, because we have some public hearings, this is a chance for you to provide your comments. I'm taking notes, we're, a couple of us are taking notes. And we're trying not to interact, but I did want to try to respond a little bit about what the role of the Planning Commission is. I understand you're trying to get to the bigger picture, but we really need to just provide your comments, and we're trying not to interact, and then we would be happy to try to address some of these issues and concerns on Wednesday.
I'm still trying to figure out what your jobs are.
Any other comments from the public? Righty.
Chair, if I may. The Planning Commission oversees implementation of and updates to the city's Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. The Commission reviews and approves or denies applications for various types of land uses. I found that on, I found that on my phone. Yes. That's what the Planning Commission does.
So we're going to move on. We're going to move on from this because I think Wednesday is the much more appropriate format for this type of discussion where you will have opportunities to interact with the staff and other members to really get to the, your questions and your issues and concerns in a much responsive manner than we can do here. We're really not in a position to do that tonight as any other planning body. It's not those decision-makers, but informational. So sorry if this, so I'm sorry if this is not the place for you and we're not going to have that conversation tonight.
We've already answered that question. And they don't have decision-making authority over middle housing. So we've already answered that. It's a state mandate.
I'm asking what decisions do you make?
I just read that, ma'am. I just read that. That, that's, that's the Planning Commission. That's what the Planning Commission does.
Well, we were required. Well, we were required to adopt these changes by state law. They didn't really have a choice, so, yeah.
But when you approve something and allowing this to happen, isn't you supposed to buy that before you approve it?
Again, I'm going to ask that we have this conversation. Staff, you move that to Wednesday and make sure you have good notes so that they are able to respond and...
I'm not talking about them.
We need to move on.
We need to move on as far as the Planning Commission role tonight and what we're gathered for. Once again, Wednesday will be your opportunity to ask questions.
When was the initial development approved by the Planning Commission?
This isn't the time for this question. This is something that we can talk about on Wednesday. We have two hearings tonight that don't relate to middle housing. And Chair, is the business from the public over?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Legislative Public Hearing regarding the Albany Developmental Code amendments described in Planning File DC-03-24. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials, and are you all familiar with them?
Yes.
I called the reporter, the Legislative Public Hearing, at 5:46 PM. If you wish to testify, there are two options available which were described on the agenda. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the Planning Commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the Planning Commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
At this time, I call for the staff report from Project Planner Liz Olmstead.
Hold it down. Okay, can everyone hear me? I'm Liz Olmstead, a planner with the Planning Department here, the Community and Development Division. So tonight we have before you Planning File DC-0324, and, which is minor clarifications, corrections, and revisions to various articles of the Albany Development Code. Oh, it moved. Sorry about that. So these slides are going to show you what we are amending in each article. It's kind of a generalized overview. There's more detail in your packet. The first one is adding tree removal associated with the development of housing to the procedure by application type table. We've also proposed to clarify activities exempt from land use review and adding a reference to activities that do not require land use review in other areas of the code, as well as updating application submittal requirements to better align with the digital submittal In Article Two, we propose to clarify when site plan review is required and ensure consistency with activities that are exempt from land use review in Article One, and also ensure consistency throughout other articles of the code and updating submittal requirements. In Article Three, residential zoning districts, we're updating standards to comply with new state law regarding single-room occupancy developments, affordable housing, and emergency shelters, updating other language and code references, as well as a few changes to accessory structures, clarifying how townhouse development density is calculated, updating some information for cottage clusters, and adding covers over refuse container area. Article Four, we're updating the community services uses to make sure they comply with how community services are described in Article 22, and then once again, updating standards to comply with new state law. In Article Five, here's the community services again that we're updating, state law for single-room occupancy and affordable housing, and then we're also combining sections for clarity and making corrections where terms were not updated in the previous amendment. Article Eight, we are adding a requirement for egress pass when required by the Organ Building Code. And in Article Nine, we're updating some parking and bicycle standards, clarifying carpool-vanpool spaces, adding a provision to allow a mix of solar panels and tree canopy when a parking lot is over quarter of an acre, and once again, adding covers over refuse container areas.
So a couple of those changes, state law changed since we first adopted some of our standards, and so we needed to, we wanted to update our code, so things just kind of keep changing at the state level. So related to the larger parking lot provisions, and then also to the number of bicycle spaces required for multifamily developments.
So Article Ten, we are removing the requirement to submit 10 copies of a plot plan since we're all online these days, and then clarifying temporary dwelling special use permits. Article Eleven, once again, adding egress pass required by the Organ Building Code, adding maximum block length standard to the average block length, or the block standard section, sorry. And then we are revising some things from the Public Works Department about curb radius, storm drainage reports, and then lastly, we are codifying the director's interpretation regarding when building permits are required with middle housing land division applications. Then Article Two, we're clarifying the types of facilities and organizations included in the community services category and referencing state emergency shelter siting standards, revising language for consistency throughout the rest of the code, and adding a few definitions that are referenced elsewhere in the code that we didn't have definitions for. So the amendments have criteria that we need to follow, and so the proposed amendments are applicable to Comprehensive Plans statewide planning goals and policies. So staff has found that the amendments are consistent with Goal One, citizen involvement, Goal Two, land use planning, and Goal Ten, housing. Criteria Two is the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable Development Code and base zone purpose statements. So staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend the city council to approve the proposed text amendments as modified in Exhibit A for File DC-0324.
Better slides. We have some staff proposed modifications, so I wanted to, we know that Mr. Lutman's going to testify here in a minute, but we had some technical issues, and we noticed a few things, and then one of, we got some comments from a colleague who Mr. Lutman uses, and we have a few additional changes to the packet that we couldn't get to before tonight. So in Article Three, we were just initially proposing to combine some of the types of housing that are considered middle housing into a row that said middle housing, but we realized that these uses are also standalone uses in some of the zones where middle housing isn't a type of use, so we realized, oh, we needed to undo that, so I highlighted those. This is page 34 in your packet, what those changes are, and then there's another section where we have a proposed change that, you can go to the next slide. So when we're talking about community services, we forgot to remove the section that's in yellow here. So currently, the community services are typically owned, well, they are owned and operated by a public body or a nonprofit organization, and they can include a variety of different uses, shelters, that kind of thing. But what we have found is that a lot of our emergency shelter is sometimes longer-term stays, short-term housing is, we don't want to necessarily have a specific date associated with that, so we are proposing to remove where tenancy may be arranged for periods of less than one month. The key here is that these developments are owned by a nonprofit and managed by a nonprofit, and that helps us ensure that it's a community service rather than just a regular, maybe house or whatever. So we talked about removing it and kind of went back and forth and decided to go ahead and do that. And then on the next slide, oh, and I wanted to tell you, these changes are on the dais for you. I forgot to tell you, there, I have three pages. I just reviewed the first and second pages, and then on the third page, we had some comments from, oh, just there. We had a little bit of redundancy in our section 1.105. It's the third page in your stapled packet about when land use applications are not required. So we have made a few changes to numbers two and four. We really combined number 14 and number four together, and then there was some redundancy in the earlier version of number two with number 12 down there at the bottom, so we just tried to fix some of that wording. And then the last thing is, we didn't provide it for you, but in the requirement for storm drainage information, there was some language that it's about getting information on impervious surfaces, and it included, you know, certain types of impervious surfaces. We're just proposing to take that out because we have a definition of impervious surfaces in the code, and so we didn't really need that, and they're in these sections 2.490 and 11.300, and we didn't provide you with all that, but essentially, we're just taking out a few words that weren't needed. And those were partly, we did review all the comments that we received. We didn't receive any public testimony. We did receive some comments that weren't intended to be public testimony, but you might hear some testimony this evening from Mr. Lutman, and I want to let you know that of all the suggestions that were provided, we did, some are reflected in what I just described here, and some others are ones that were not necessary to make or are not ones that we're able to make.
I was just wondering, on the single-room occupancy, is that just like a single home with four bedrooms and a common kitchen, and somebody shares a room, or is that a special kind of building, or what is that?
Well, the state does have a specific definition, and the reason why we needed to update our code was to include that definition, and it's, and I'll explain a little bit about what these are, and the definitions are in Article 22, but a single-room occupancy development is a development that has at least four attached units in the same building that share a common kitchen and/or bathroom facilities, and then the separate units are lockable. That's essentially the definition. So they could be, and this is where there's new state law, that we have to allow single-room occupancy developments of between four and six units, sort of just like a single dwelling unit in a single-family house. So, but it's really like a house that just has, you know, it could be any house. Right now, somebody could be renting out rooms in their house, but there is a specific definition now for a single-room occupancy development. So it could be cited as a single-family house or a single-dwelling unit house in areas that allow for single detached dwelling units, as long as there's no more than six units within that building. Then on the multi-dwelling unit side, you can, there is no limit on the number of units, but you have to have a minimum of four that are in one building with the shared common facilities. So whether, now my daughter lives in one, her whole apartment complex, it was a series of four units, and they had the shared kitchen, and they each had their own bathrooms, but you could have a different number of rooms sharing common areas. So state, so we've already, we've had a definition in our code, and we haven't had this kind of development come in where they call it single-room occupancy developments, but we're just trying to be consistent with state law, and essentially, it's a form of multi-dwelling unit development, and also, it now can also be a form of what we might think of as just a single building with up to six units, and it could be cited in a residential neighborhood, or somebody could take their house and figure out how to comply with that definition. I don't know that I answered your question, but we are just trying to comply with some new state law.
I was just wondering if there was a development somewhere of those?
Not really, but I mean, I think you mostly think of these as apartment complexes, or we used to have quads and quints, and so that term is sort of something that was lingering in our code, and single-room occupancy was lingering in our code, and we just were thinking, well, these are just like apartments, but now the state is saying, well, it's not just multi-dwelling units, it's also, you have to allow them for single, you know, as a single dwelling unit, like a single dwelling unit. So we added stuff back into the code where we removed it because we just kind of considered them multifamily, not worrying about whether there were locks on the doors, for example. Good question.
So my question was, I noticed that on page 41 of the packet, this is the single-room occupancy development, and then another, I don't have my, I was taking notes in my phone, and I left my phone at home, so I'm not remembering exactly the other space, but it said that there were no single-room occupancies in RR. And then here, it says, single-room occupancy, and it has five acres, and then, and so I'm a little confused. That seems like a discrepancy.
I don't think there's anything that says you can't have single-room occupancy developments in RR. It's just an existing lot that's zoned residential can have, you know, one dwelling unit, except that the SRO development, if it's going to be in a single dwelling unit zone like RR, RS10, you can only have one building, and it has between four and six units, so the maximum number of units is there. If you were going to partition a property or divide land that's zoned RR, the minimum lot size is five acres for any development. I don't know if that clarifies your question, but Liz is looking at the specific section on page 41, and we can see if there's a clarification that might be needed for that note.
So if you have an SRO on the five acres, you can't have any other buildings?
Correct.
Okay. All good. I can't find the section where it had an N instead of a Y, and so I'm like...
You could send us comments after in case there's a further clarification that we might need to make for the version that goes to the city council.
Yeah, that's all I was like...
I just had one question also about the single-room occupancy. You said it could be a house. I'm trying to envision another way to do that, like what else could that look like other than a house with just multiple rooms that lock in it?
Well, so if it's in a single dwelling unit zone or whatever, lower density zones, it would look like a house and feel like a house, and it would be that way, but it can be an apartment complex where apartment complexes are allowed. It's not just in a house, you know, it can be any other, in zones that allow other types of housing units, it could be basically where multi-dwelling unit development is allowed, you could do that, and it may not look like a house, it might look like an apartment building. So it's really either where apartments are allowed, or if it's a vacant lot... So it's really either where apartments are allowed, or if it's a vacant lot, you know, right next to me or whatever in my neighborhood, you could have one building, it's probably going to look like a house with a front door, because you're sharing, you know, the common areas, and then each bedroom would have locks. Now, somebody can just do that today within their existing house, so...
Right.
Yeah. It's just trying to clarify that, I think this...
Naming it something different almost.
Well, the state law, I think, is just trying to clarify that it doesn't have to always be in a multi-dwelling-unit apartment-like type building.
Okay.
And is the criteria that it has a lock on the door, is that the criteria then?
Well, in order to cite the single-room occupancy, yeah, there's, it's lockable private spaces, that's part of the state definition. So we modified our definition to add that in there to be consistent.
Any more clarifying questions for staff? Go ahead, Stacy.
Oh, and the 500-square-foot unit, is that the maximum size? Or on the, a single-room occupancy? It's located, see, it goes from 5,000 square feet, you know, in the other zones, to the multi, to the RM, and RMA, and HDR, it goes down to 500 square foot per unit. Is that a maximum?
That's the minimum area requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have minimum area requirements. Thank you for bringing this up. So there is a table, Liz will find out what page that's on.
It's on 41, 41 again.
Yeah, we have minimum lot size requirements for each of our housing types. But for multi-dwelling units, you know, apartments, we have a minimum area requirement currently based on bedroom, number of bedrooms. We have studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms, you know, so we have different area requirements. We're actually going to be proposing with a future code amendment package to remove that, because we're not able to achieve our minimum density, you know, our density allowances. But for now, because we still have that standard in there, we tried to come up with something, because we still require a certain amount of land, even though stuff is still regulated by height and lot coverage, we just wanted to have a row for a single-room occupancy development to explain the amount of land that's required for those that are more of the apartment style.
So that's, that's the land?
The land area. It's not, doesn't have anything to do with the size of the unit, it's the amount of land needed per unit.
Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Will now be taken public testimony. Please state your name, mail, and address for the record, and if anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and provide it to the clerk. Virtual attendees, please email it to cdaa@cityofauburny.net. So no written testimony was submitted by the deadline. So those who registered to speak during this meeting will be called upon to present verbal testimony, and that would be Scott. Against, state your name. Address, we distilled it.
My name is Scott Lutman, 100 Ferry Street, Albany, Oregon. I don't know all the technical deal, details, but briefly, a couple, this is for the code amendment changes, not the floodplain amendment changes.
Correct.
Okay. So one item of concern is the refuse area, the disposable area should be covered. We have a concern that, well, the trashcans are already covered. So, and I have, I will say, I don't know the technical, the details regarding this. I'm here tonight because the two land use planners that I use told me that I need to ask for an extension of the hearing, so we can more appropriately respond to the concerns that they have regarding things that I do. But another item is, I have land that I can rock for storage. I have a lot on the river that is, should be repurposed for something other than storage, but it's used for storage because I have, the land that I could use for storage needs to be rocked. And there's concerns about Section 11.300B and how that might affect my ability to rock these parcels. And as far as the other technical details, I don't, I don't feel like I'm adequately informed to respond to those. So that's all my comments for this evening on those code amendments.
Any comments?
Any questions of the... So Scott, essentially, you're saying that it's a lot of information, there's a lot of things in here you haven't had time to fully process, so you're asking us for a continuance, so that you can look at it and come back before we make these decisions? Is that what you're asking?
Correct, yes.
What is the process for that?
So I can respond to that, and then we could see whether staff has a rebuttal. But to respond to that question, for quasi-judicial hearings, you must allow a continuance of the hearing to a date certain. That is not a requirement for legislative hearings, which is what this is tonight, because the council has an opportunity to, there's going to be another hearing already for the council. And I will say that we did go over every single item that, and I appreciate that Scott's planners, who he has coming up and coming up with the list, and we went through all those. But I, when it's the appropriate time on the meeting, we can respond to Scott's testimony. I just wanted to respond to that question.
Well, I guess my concern is our last meeting was in December. You have a continuance, and I don't even know when our next meeting's going to be.
June 3rd, actually, Monday, Monday, June 3rd.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Further discussion. So we will now be taking public testimony for those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you are attended virtually, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon by the chair and unmute. Were attended by phone, please unmute yourself and state your names on the chair.
Sorry, Chair, but we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's usually not an issue. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about the application? If so, please state your name and address, and make any comments you may have for the planning commission. Does staff wish to respond to any testimony presented? Okay.
Yeah, sure. And I may ask Liz to respond. So regarding the first comment by Mr. Lutman regarding the addition of requesting that the refuse areas be covered, what his planners are saying is that refuse containers are covered, but our Public Works Department, I think it's a water quality and storm drainage issue, where there's sometimes leakage that still happens with covered bins. And so a lot of cities require those areas to be covered, so that there is not any rain going into the bins, and then maybe running into the runoff end. So that, that's our understanding of the request from Public Works. Liz, do you, I don't, do you have any other thoughts on, okay. And that, I mean, it is true that bins are covered, and that was, I mean, that's just something that we could get more information for the council meeting, but I think there's a water quality concern and stormwater runoff concern. Then I already responded to the request for the continuance, so, I mean, you could do that. There is an opportunity for the public to still review these comments, and the council hearing is scheduled for June 12th. So there is still time for them to, we will be making the modifications, if you agree to them, tonight, and then reposting that, and then there would still be time for further review by the public of the amendment package. But it is up to you, we would just have to continue the, we'd have to figure out that, we'd have to open the hearing, I think, at the council and possibly continue that as well. And then regarding property along the river that Mr. Lutman owns, he's, one of the areas that we were trying to remove some redundancy was about, there's a storm drainage report requirement in 11.300B, and it listed out the types of impervious surfaces. We were just proposing to remove the types of impervious surfaces. We already have a definition of impervious surfaces in our code that lists rock, you know, asphalt, and some other things, roof cover. So that requirement is something that is a Public Works requirement for the storm drainage reports, and we're just trying to get those at the application stage, rather than later, so that we can do our completeness review, so that it doesn't delay a project down the road. They may go, whoop, we're still going to need a storm drainage report. We're just telling applicants now that if you are impacting more than 5,000 square feet of impervious surface, then we want you to submit the storm drainage report. And it would be something that would kick in later, we're just trying to avoid the later, and trying to be more responsive. In some ways, we would be asking more upfront, but it does save a lot of time in the process for the completeness review and going back and forth with the applicant. Did, you want to add anything to that, or David? Okay.
Anne, I have a question. So in regard to the covering of the trash, it's something I've run into in various jurisdictions where there's a concern about that. And it's usually both covering it and how the stormwater is taken away through what, you know, whether there's a filter or just a oil separator or something. But usually, it's not unusual, let's put it this way, to have other municipalities have these kind of rules in place. My first question, I guess, for clarification, is that it doesn't retroactively apply to every dumpster in town. So it would be sort of going forward, right? And so if a new...
Correct.
...business comes in, what basically it is, is, you know, wherever your dumpsters are, they want an additional roof over the top, or some method to make sure that rainwater off of that area, some of them allowed to go into a special filter or something like that, if for some reason you can't put a cover over it. So it's not unusual. I do point out that, you know, it's kind of a drop in a bucket, but it will have effect over time. So, and then, what was the other one? I can't, can't remember what the other one was, but...
Thanks.
I'm good.
Hey. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? So please raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attended by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name, so the chair can call you to speak. So I'm a little at a loss right. Right, that's what I was about to say. So I was wondering if there was a need to postpone or till June 3rd. Go ahead, Stacy.
It sounds like since our, will be, you know, or the city council will be hearing it in over a month's time from now, that there is time for any person to review it. That's what I heard. And it seems like it gives the people enough time that they wouldn't need extra time from the planning commission. But that's just a thought.
Anybody else have any...
Yeah, how does the commission, I went through, it's like 180 pages or something. And I went through it, and I've done this, you know, for my living. And so it's a little confusing to me, but I felt like, so I guess my perspective on it, there is a process, and there are several stages. And even the best conceived of and carried out by staff, you're still going to have glitches or things that'll come up. But usually, down the road, when somebody actually tries to use the code and they run into some things that were unattended, I think it's inevitable. I think if we wait until, you know, it's perfect to vote on it, it probably never happens. I mean, there's, so the fact that there's a process in place where developers like Scott have the ability to look at this through, and if they see anything glaring, I mean, Scott can look at it for two weeks, and he'll still miss something that will catch him a year from now. So I think that's just baked into the cake. I, I think we should go ahead and pass this and keep the process moving forward, and trust that staff in the city is honest and wanting to get this right for everybody.
Go ahead. Tyler, do you have a comment?
It was a lot, it took me four or five days to, I read it and had to put it down, because I was starting to glaze over. But it was a lot to get through. And as Anne indicated, there is an opportunity, and you've taken notes, and we're going to make the edits and corrections that have been brought forward thus far. And then the city council will see it on June 12th, is what I understand. Okay, well. And so I declare this public hearing closed at 6:21. Does the planning commission wish to continue to discuss the amendments or ask questions of staff? Questions, clarification? Ted, you've been pretty quiet online. You have any comments or questions? Commissioner Bunch?
I do not, but I would like a copy of the corrections that were given out to you all emailed to me. Thank you.
Staff will do that, thank you. So do I hear a motion?
A move to recommend that the city council approve the amendment requests as presented in the staff report for planning file number DC-03-24 with the following modifications. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the May 6, 2024 staff report and findings in support of the application made by the planning commission during deliberations on this matter.
Pardon me, I'm sorry to interrupt. There are, on the dais, there's, there's three bullets that address the three pages that I need to send to Ted. I apologize. So sorry, Commissioner Bunch. If you could just, you could just read the first parts, that would be helpful.
amend table 3.050-1, not combining middle housing types, and remove the tenancy requirement for emergency shelters or short-term, short-term housing in Section 22.190, and remove redundancy in Sections 1.105, comma, 2.4905, and 1.1.300B. Motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the May 6, 2024 staff report and findings in support of the application made by the planning commission during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
There's a motion made by Karen and seconded by Bill. We'll now call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. So the city council will hold a public hearing on these amendments on Wednesday, June 12th at 6 o'clock PM. And next on our agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding the Albany developmental code amendments described in planning file DC-02-24. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials, and are you all familiar with them?
Yes.
Okay, I call to order the legislative public hearing at 6:25 PM. Okay, I call to order the legislative public hearing at 6:25 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available which were described on the agenda. At this time, I call for the reading of the meeting procedures by David.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the planning commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the planning commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
All right. At this time, I call for the staff report from project planner Jennifer Capello.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Capello. I'm with the planning department. I'm the senior planner here, and I will be presenting planning file DC-0224. But just a little bit of background, since the floodplain typically does not come to the planning commission, the Albany has, the city of Albany, has been an NFIP community since 1985 and a CRS community since 1991. Albany has two rivers and numerous creeks, all which contain the potential for flood hazards in the community. The participation in these programs provide our citizens flood insurance, and with the higher regulations that we have through the CRS program, it provides a discount on the flood insurance that's available to all citizens of Albany, whether they're in the floodplain or not. The proposed amendments are all contained in the Albany Development Code, Article 6, which contains the city's floodplain ordinance. An Arizona audit by the Department of Land Conservation Development found the city's floodplain ordinance does not meet the state's minimum floodplain standards. The proposed amendments will update the city's floodplain ordinance to align with the Oregon's model floodplain ordinance, which has been approved by FEMA to meet and in some cases exceed the National Flood Insurance Program's minimum requirements for development in the regulated floodplain. In addition to aligning the city's floodplain ordinance to the Oregon Model Floodplain Ordinance, the staff included some additional clarifying language as noted in the staff report. Those include a correction in the floodway restrictions, which had structures as permanent or habitable, and we just slimmed it down to permanent structures as defined in the definitions, as well as a change into Article 6.111 sub 2, where we added some additional clarifying language to support the A D A M, the municipal code updates for stormwater. The criterion findings for this review are two. One is the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals and policies. These include Goal 1, which is citizen involvement, Goal 2, land use planning, and Goal 7, which is flood hazards and hillsides. Criteria two, the proposed developments are consistent with the applicable development zone code and base zone purpose statements. The purpose of the floodplain overlay district standards in the ADC are to manage development in the floodway in a way that promotes public and environmental health and safety and minimize the economic loss and social disruption caused by impending flood events. The process for this and timeline, as it is a type 4 legislative review, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, and the city council has, is the final decision maker. The public notice was advertised with the legal section of the Democrat Herald on April 27th of 2024. Notice was posted to the city's website and to DLCD, and was physically mailed to Benton County, Lynn County, and the Mid Willamette Council of Governments, governments on April 29th of 2024. The timeline for this is today, or, sorry, today we have our public meeting for planning commission. On June 12th, we will have our city council public hearing, hopefully with the first and second reading of the ordinance, and then effective date being 30 days following the ordinance of approval. That concludes my staff report.
Does, do any commission members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report?
Can you go back a couple, I just want to be sure, can you go back a couple of slides where it talked about basically the water purification or?
Okay.
Yeah, here we go. So basically, the storm, this is saying, if I understand this right, it's talking about non, control of non-point source pollution, surface erosion, sediment stream. So these are things that have been in place for a long time at the state already, haven't they? I mean, this is just saying we're trying to get Albany's code incompatible with the state?
Correct, yeah. So all of the adjustments with the, and excluding of these two additional are to get the city's Albany, or the city of Albany's floodplain ordinance to align with the state's floodplain ordinance. These two different ones was, one was for clarification, and 6.1112 was to comply with the new updates to the municipal code, which is part of another state program called the MS4, which is run by the EPA.
So we're just getting in compliance with the state, we're not?
Correct. We're not adding anything.
Not adding anything. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Yep.
It says now that there are three elevation certificates needed as opposed to two.
Correct. So that's been a FEMA requirement since at around 2019. Our code was outdated and we only required two. So now we require the pre-construction, the mid-construction, which is done after foundation but before any vertical construction continues, and then the final at the end of construction.
Can it be a different surveyor or it has to be the same engineer?
It can be any licensed organ surveyor. So you can hire different ones at different points.
Okay. Another question I had, though, was on the manufactured homes needing to be on a permanent foundation?
Correct, yeah.
And that in parks also?
Correct. So anything in the floodplain has to be anchored and resistant to floodwaters, so hydrostatic and hydrostatic condition, so movement side to side and bubbling up.
I just thought it was strange in a park because those are usually so mobile, you know, they move them around a lot more than any others.
Correct. Yeah, so a common method has been tie-downs. When I worked out other jurisdictions, that was common for outside of the floodplain as well as to do tie-downs rather than slab-on-grade. And so that can be used also in the floodplain.
Do you have other questions for staff?
We will now be taking public testimony. Please state your name, mailing address for the record. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and provide it to the clerk. Virtual attendees, please email it to cbaalbany.net. No written testimony was submitted by the time. So we have no one who is registered to speak. Ah, wrong again. Here we is. You signed up again? No, you don't have to. Come on up, Scott. So those who register to speak will, will go through that right now. So Scott?
My name is Scott Lutman, 130 Street, Northwest Albany. I have concern about the floodplain amendments because I have two properties that are in the floodplain. One has a letter of map amendment. It's a 40-acre property with 14 acres that are identified in Zone AE that we had a Lomar F fill, and so it's out of the floodplain. And I'm concerned about that development. And I also own eight acres next to North Albany Middle School, which I have a fill permit on, but I do not have a Lomar F on that because I haven't got the final grade on it yet. But I'm concerned about the effect of these code changes for these properties in the floodplain. And we've only had one week to review them. Now, as an appraiser, what I am concerned about is the utility associated with property to determine its value and utility. Whether or not there is a cover over a trash can probably is not going to affect the property value. But these provisions could and may, and I'm not thoroughly informed of them. I do, would like, I would like to state that there's two sections that I'm concerned ADC 1.040 already includes regulations on interpretation, so why add another section 6.088 that differs from 1.040? It seems like the land use planners that I consult with, they believe there's a conflict between them. That might be concerning. The next part is Section 6.110, which is related to four lots or four acres, which is, whichever is lesser, and the new regulations associated with that. Now, I think that staff probably wouldn't be prompted to make these changes unless they were required by the state, I suspect. But we haven't had an opportunity to review them, and we don't understand the flexibility associated with them. So again, I would be requesting a continuance so that way we can more thoroughly understand Thank you.
I'll be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand, and if you are attended virtually, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon by the chair and unmute. If you are attended by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can call you to speak. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about the application? If so, please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the planning Does the staff wish to respond to any testimony presented?
Okay. So in addressing the concern of the four lots or four acres, whichever is lesser, that has been a higher standard that the city of Albany has had prior to this. It was stated earlier in the code. And then when we were required to add that language, we just continued through so that way there wouldn't be a conflict with previous statements in the code that says four lots or four acres, and change it down to five lots, five acres. So it's to be consistent with our existing higher standards and requirements for development in the floodplain. And then the interpretation portion comes straight out of the required code amendments from the state. The state, when they did our audit and they gave us the model code, we are not allowed to deviate with that language. We have to adopt their language without getting private, prior approval through the state and FEMA. That concludes my rebuttal.
So I have a question for staff. So Scott's requested a continuance. What is the process? So let's say we go ahead and vote it through tonight. Is there a method by which if he discovers something that's very troubling, that he can talk to staff ahead of it, or does he just wait for city council? And then, again, it's really difficult to make these decisions if we don't have time to think about them.
Yeah, so we are open to comment at any given time. Prior to this going out to public notice and the meeting, we did have multiple engineering and surveying firms review these amendments, as well as other local jurisdictions to review them before we put it out to public notice to get feedback from the people who are typically involved in doing the letter of map removals, elevation certificates, and the like. At that time, we received two comments, one from Cancun with West Consultants, engineering firm, and then one from Benton County, and that was all that responded during that time. But there is ability for more. The record is open. The record will remain open until the city council. At the conclusion of the city council, that's when the record would close unless a continuation was requested at that time.
So essentially, if Scott finds something that's horrific and tells staff about it, then you have time to look into it, talk to him about it, and when it comes up to city council, you'll, you know, everyone will be up to speed in terms of what the issue is.
Correct. If something was glaringly wrong between the model code and what we have, or if there was additional questions or concerns, it would be brought up and test, any written testimony would be submitted to the council in their packet to have a chance to review as well. So anything that you're, if you recommend approval to the city council, it would go on the staff report, but if anything that comes in after this meeting, still stays part of the record and will be able to be reviewed.
Thank you.
So being reviewed, that doesn't make any edits to the current document?
Correct. If there was a major edit, we would end up bringing it back before planning commission, and then you guys would view it again.
So what Scott is asking for, continuing is to make some edits to the current revised codes, or are we looking to say, okay, we'll move it forward, and then any edits would have to come at the city council meeting?
So I think what I was hearing Scott say is that he just needed more time to really go through this. And, you know, between now and June 12th is nearly a month, and if anything does come up, we believe that it could be addressed. Now, if it comes up too late for the council packets, it doesn't mean that they still wouldn't be considered. They could still be part of the record at the city council meeting, and it might mean that they'll have to delay their decision until they've had a chance to look over what the edits might be.
So the edits would not, if Scott found something and he wanted it to be edited, could not be edited, or it could be presented at the city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
I do have a question. Is there anything in this, like, are we in a hurry to get this done, or is there any reason why continuance would be an issue?
Kind of. So we are out of date on this code. The model ordinance was adopted in 2019, so we're severely behind. It does affect our CRS compatibility, so we're currently rated out of five, which provides, I think it's 25% discount on flood insurance to all our citizens. So if we aren't able to pass it, we would lose that ranking, which would cause flood insurance for the community to go up.
Within one month time period?
Not necessarily one month. Right now, there is some legal issues happening at the federal level that I do not have a timeline. So if those get settled, then our review will occur because we're at our five-year annual, or five-year cycle review, and that's when they dictate based on our code and being in compliance if we still qualify for the rating that we're at.
And when do you say that was?
We were supposed to have that meeting on April, but because there's some federal contracting conflicts, we do not know when that date will happen. So once the federal contract issues settle, then they will come into the community and review our information. They've already reviewed it and found it lacking, and submitted some comments, and then DLCD's comments also piggybacked on top of it. So we are doing this to comply with both the state requirements and to maintain our community rating, ranking, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, like I said, this is what I do for a living, or used to do for a living before I retired, but I read through everything, and if there's going to be something really major, it kind of jumps out at you. And I think what Scott is saying, well, these are a lot of little things, and who knows what could be in conflict, but there's nothing major that's jumping out, otherwise he'd be telling us about it, and I probably would have noticed it myself. So I think just in terms of respecting the process, I don't see any reason to hold this up because we do have that June date. And if there were something really major, it would probably be noticed by now.
From the staff. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? So please raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attended by
Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself, state your name, so the chair can call on you to speak. This is a comment that Skylar brought up. I wasn't sure about the urgency of this happening and getting this moved forward. And want to make certain that we are, as a commission, hearing and listening to public comment when they ask for extensions. What does that mean for us? What does that mean for that individual if we say, you know, urge you, but we didn't act on what you recommended? And if there's anything that, Bill, you said you didn't see that was glaring, that wouldn't prevent Scott from going to city council and making an argument for any additional edits? It was a lot of information to consume, and that's not my field of expertise. So I, like I said, it took me like four or five days to review the documents. And I'm a little concerned when he, about that forward that we, that a continuation might not be in order till June 3rd to give him more time to look through it. I just want to make sure we're being responsible. Addressing and listening to when public ask for a few more days to review something that they might find. And I know, Bill, you're an expert in this, so I look to you. But I also want to make sure we're hearing from the public.
I think what Scott is asking for is more time. And June 3rd will allow more time, even if it is passed, you know, is set in concrete. So I think if we go ahead and pass it so that everything goes forward on, at this level. And then on the 12, on the 3rd, if anything is an issue.
City council don't meet until the 12th. So June 3rd is our next meeting. So if this is closed, then it's not going to come.
Yeah, that gives them even more time to go.
What I'm saying, if we don't take, if we close it today, that's done until it goes to the city council, which does not give Scott the chance to review and make his edits and work with staff to make any edits. Any edits would have to happen after city council, correct? Once city council receives it, then any edits would happen at that time?
Have to go back open for public hearing again.
I mean, it would be during the intervening time if there's edits that were proposed. And that could be through the time between now and the city council hearing, but also at the city council hearing.
Because we're just making a recommendation, then we're not really deciding anything.
Right, but that's what was, but I wanted to make clear that what we move forward, no additional edits can be added that would go to the city council. This recommendation that we're making is what's being proposed by staff.
Right, but if there's edits that come in between now and the council hearing, that is information that we can provide to the council.
Right.
On top of your recommendation.
The council will get it, but they would get the, they would not get the edits included in this air document that comes from us.
Right, it would be your recommendation, and then additional information provided under separate cover.
And I'm willing to, I just want to make sure I'm clear and wanted to make sure that we were acting in the best interest of the community.
I think it's pretty obvious that if Scott had a problem, he'd tell us about it. His problem is he hasn't, doesn't know if he has a problem. And so, you know, maybe we didn't notify him early enough. I mean, that, and, but typically, when someone comes before us and they want us to consider something, then they know what it is, and they explain, here's the problem. So Scott's just saying, well, I didn't have time to see if there were problems, so I want more time. But there really is, as long as staff is genuine in terms of taking any more comments and getting them to the actual decision maker, which is council, in a fair way, then I don't see where he's disadvantaged. He still has the time to do that. And if something, you know, you pour milk on the oatmeal, and if the lumps come up, and often they do, then he has a chance to tell staff and put that before the council. So I feel good about it.
Any more comments? Well, I declare this public hearing closed at 6:50 PM. Do we need to discuss any more of the amendments or ask questions, additional questions to staff? So do I hear a motion?
I move to recommend that the city council approve the amendment request as presented in the staff report for planning file number DC-02-24. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the May 6, 2024, staff report and findings in support of the application made by the planning commission during deliberations in this matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Erin moved, and Stacy's second. Is there call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the motion carries. And I think we're almost done. Any staff updates?
Oh, we just wanted to check number 15 here about the Albany City Council on the chair guide.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, David, for giving. The Albany City Council will hold public hearing on these amendments on Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM. Thank you, David. Right now, what staff update?
Can you hear me? Yep. I didn't know if you had any staff updates. I was just going to go ahead and give. So there is the middle housing meeting on Wednesday that David provided some information about that. It's on the city webpage. I just provided a handout to you, and I will email this out as well. But essentially, I mean, what David said is correct, that, you know, this is actually a community conversation. You certainly are, you're able to attend, but it's not being advertised as a planning commission meeting. There won't be any discussion among planning commission. It's really our job as staff to try to respond to some of the concerns that you heard this evening, along with a bunch of others that we receive through the middle housing land division application up in North Albany that you heard about. So I will be there. We'll have transportation staff there. I think the city attorney might be there, and then David and Matthew. So I just wanted you to know some of the information that we'll be sharing. It'll be abbreviated from what I provided to you this evening. I think this handout is supposed to be on our website by now. But if you have any specific questions, you're welcome to communicate with staff at any time. This isn't a land use hearing or anything. But we are going to take notes, and then we'll probably provide those notes available to the public somewhere so that I don't want you to feel like you're missing out. But I did want to bring that up. It is a community conversation, and a lot of times, you know, different counselors will attend those. But it, you know, it's really staff's job to hear more comments and concerns. And we're working towards it. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we can't address due to middle housing, but there may be some other things that we can do outside of middle housing, land use law, that we can look into. For example, the transportation systems plan, they're getting ready to launch the update for that. And, you know, some of the, so that people understand the process of how we go about determining adequate roads and infrastructure and things like that. So, and I can answer any questions you might have now if you'd like.
Since this is my first meeting, I was just curious what involvement the planning commission had in this, you know, the selection, not the middle housing law, but like where it was chosen. Was that city council, or was that planning commission?
So we did a whole package of amendments back in 2001. And we did have planning commission hearings. We had work sessions with the planning commission and city council to walk through all the issues and the few that there could be some local decision making around. So there was a lot of involvement with planning commission and council. That's some of the planning that you got to do, and we hope to be doing more planning. Yeah, sorry, 2021, not 2001, sorry, I'm mixing that up with House Bill 2001. It was 2021. So those amendments went into effect January 1st, or January 14th, or something in 2022. So most of the requirements are in state law. So, but this handout will provide you with a lot of that information. And we're starting to provide it to some of the residents. And I mean, there are some concerns, and one of the, there is a land use process for the initial land division. And at that time, there are review criteria. Is there sufficient infrastructure, including transportation? So when the initial lots are created, you know, and wherever you live in your neighborhood, whenever those lots are created, at that time, staff does do an analysis of whether we have adequate infrastructure. And if not, there are usually conditions of approval that require those improvements to be made. Once, sorry, once that parent lot is created, they can put middle housing on it. Now, it's just a building permit. It's, you know, if a lot's large enough, and it could have been created yesterday or five years ago, or just, you know, any point in time, if it's a lot that's residentially zoned and it's the right size for the type of middle housing that's proposed, they just come in and get a building permit for it. There isn't anything we can do. What happened in this case is that the initial subdivision went through a land division process. It's a staff level decision. And they did that before we had the middle housing, the middle housing code updates. Those lots are, and it being created, they can go ahead and put in fourplexes and not go back and divide those. But you can divide a middle housing development so that you are providing the home ownership opportunities. And when you do that, there is a process, it's in state law that we have in our development code, same as state law. It's an expedited land use process, and it is, it's an expedited application process. It's not even a land use application, but we still review the application so that it meets the criteria in state law, which is essentially that each house, it's very basic. It doesn't get into, are the roads sufficient, or is the infrastructure sufficient? Because that is what is reviewed when the parent lot is created. So when somebody comes in for a middle housing land division, now, in this case, they haven't put the middle housing on the property yet. They could have done that, and the neighbors wouldn't have known anything about it. But because they're doing townhouses, they're coming in and, sorry, they're dividing the land so that each of those will be on their own separate property. And we do have a notice requirement that's in state law of 100 feet. So we notify neighbors of it. Neighbors were previously noticed that it was going to be a, you know, a neighborhood with 22 lots. And then, well, the developer changed his mind and decided to do middle housing on these lots and also divide it to provide those homeownership opportunities. So that process is creating homeownership opportunities. But there was at least a notice requirement where if you were just putting in a fourplex and not doing a land division, there wouldn't have been any notice. And it, it's just, I mean, we're restricted by a lot of what's in state code. And we have some questions for our city attorney about whether we can do things differently, maybe in the application process. But it is fairly prescriptive.
My question around that is, you're saying it was originally 22, and I assume that city services were looked at based on 22 and didn't anticipate 80 or 100, whatever's coming out of it. Where does that get factored in?
Well, we can't really factor for that. And that's one of the questions we'll ask our city attorney. Can we now require applicants to tell us what type of housing is going to be on each lot? But, you know, once a lot's created, we really, I mean, if a lot is vacant and it doesn't say it's for a triplex, for example, I mean, it's, we're not sure that we can do that. Anyway, the infrastructure, when they plan for sewer and water, I mean, they're planning for lots and lots of homes in a large area, and the lines are sized to accommodate a lot of development. So I'm not really concerned about, and the public works staff knows that middle housing has been coming, and we've been trying to protect, what does that mean? We weren't necessarily thinking it might be four times the number of houses just in this one little development. But when it comes to streets, I mean, the street planning, it happens through that transportation systems plan, and it identifies major connectors and needs. And it's not just looking at one street and one small development. It's looking at all of North Albany, all of the city. Same when the water and sewer master plans are developed. So for one development, yes, it will have more trips impact, you know, on the roads. But is it going to break the system? I mean, the long range planning for transportation happens through the transportation systems plans. And then the plans usually are accommodating, you know, the worst case scenario. So the line, the sewer lines, water lines are built out to meet those standards. So we may be able to do something at that initial land division process that creates a parent lot. But this question that we don't know, it's not specified in state law. But we can't change something when you already have an existing road in place. There isn't any, we can't do, state law is very limited in what we can look at through that middle housing land division process. And again, they could have just put the fourplexes on and not divided them. And it's the same thing, we couldn't, we can't do anything about it. We have to treat middle housing the same as we would treat a single dwelling unit. So there may be more impacts. But when you're looking at the area overall, we're not expecting the whole area to become middle housing at possibly four times the amount of a single dwelling unit, right? But.
Seems like something we should, you know, think about, though. I mean, you can't go backwards, like you said, right? I mean, the stormwater runoff, or if the traffic is quadrupled what it was anticipated.
Sure. I mean, they're, they are anticipating that. It's just what, what can we do at the land division stage when it is a land use process? Because our hands are really tied once those parent lots are created.
In the case of that development in North Albany, the, each of the 80 units will be served with their own utility lines. So that's the requirement of this state law, is that each and every lot has to be served with water and sewer and storm drainage and whatnot. So stormwater detention pond was sized appropriately to accommodate the stormwater runoff of 80 homes. They had to do the engineering to show that they could meet that standard. And interestingly, on the traffic front, for townhouse development, there's an Institute of Transportation Engineers Guidebook that estimates what the number of trips generated by a townhouse development, the size of the one up in North Albany. And the PM peak hour trips was estimated to be about 45, which seems a little counterintuitive when you're talking about 80 units. But when you're looking at the demographic of those that might live in the townhomes, and the fact that people come and go at widely different times of the day, the most intense use that they would imagine was the PM peak hour use. And at that rate, it was about 45 vehicles. So, I mean, it's going to have an impact on traffic. Is it going to be a traffic Armageddon? Probably not. But I know that there's perception out there that it could be something much worse than that. And like Anne said, our hands are really tied about what we can do to mitigate those effects.
But the transportation plan would have to look at the transportation, far as the roads and rest those concerns?
Yeah, I mean, they may end up having to move up projects that are slated for that area at a later date. They might have to bring them up sooner. I mean, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, they would look at things like, I mean, just using this development as an example. The transportation plan is going to look at long range needs, you know, out 20 years. So is Gibson Hill as a right of way? know, out 20 years. So is Gibson Hill as a right of way adequate to accommodate whatever they determine is, is sufficient to move traffic? Does, you know, is there a left turn pocket that's needed, that kind of stuff? And then they plan those improvements and it gets into a schedule. We have to raise money for those improvements, you know, that kind of thing. So that plan, um, was last done in 2010. So this new plan will identify priorities, um, based on our projected growth and it's going to accommodate, you know, it's going to plan for population, you know, growth that, um, and different housing types. So it's, it has to, you know, so development can only make improvements. Again, this is at the regular land division stage that are proportionate to the, that development's impact. So when you think about Gibson Hill Road, for example, if you're from North Albany or any, any major road that goes through your, um, community that might not be a local street, but might be a collector arterial, we can't necessarily require the developer to make, just because they're the last in, do the improvement. Do you know what I mean? It's, um, has to be proportionate to their actual impact. So, I mean, the, the neighbors have had really good questions. Unfortunately, we just don't have really good answers and we're trying to identify things that we could look at modifying. Um, one of the concerns is about on-street parking. Um, will there be parking for guests that come to visit people that live in the townhouses? Um, one of the things we were looking at with the middle housing was exactly for this reason was, um, how much, how wide can driveways be? And we want to have some green space in the front yards, right? So that it's not all driveways. So actually garages and driveways are limited to a maximum of 12 feet wide for townhouses, um, which should allow some room on the street for some parking. But things that we could do, um, and look at, again, it have to apply throughout the city for all housing types is maybe when lots are a certain width, if they're pretty narrow, 20 feet or less, or I don't know what the right number is, maybe we require those to be alley loaded or something like that so that you're, you're not breaking up the street with driveways and that allows for more on-street parking. And then maybe we would allow the houses to be a little closer to the street if we can provide more backyard and an opportunity for, you know, the parking or what, if they have a garage in the back or attached. So there are things that we're, we're, we can kind of look at on the, we have to be really careful about design standards, but there are things we can look at and apply, excuse me, applies to all housing types. We might be able to look at that that might alleviate some of the concerns that we're hearing. Um, what that one example was on-street parking. Well, will there be parking for residents or something? So, I mean, there are things we're trying to look at that we can't just fix right away, but you know, we need to think through what, what to do. And I've looked at what other cities are doing and almost every single other city that I've looked at, they have the exact same standards that we have, um, because there was a state model code that a lot of us adopted the standards out of that model code. So we're not unique. All cities, 25,000 population or larger have these middle housing standards and middle housing land divisions, um, applied regardless of the city size. So.
Great. Well, at least you got a flavor of what's going to happen Wednesday.
Right. So you, you don't have to come to the meeting. I just wanted to, if you had any concerns or questions that, you know, because of what you heard tonight that you couldn't respond to.
Okay.
On the affordability, what is the area median income of this area or does it go by county or how does it go?
Well, I, I haven't looked it up. So household income is based on household size. So a one person household, their income that's affordable to them is going to be different than a five person household, right? So when we think of a, this middle housing is not affordable housing and it's not middle class housing. You heard middle class housing. It, it's not necessarily that. It's just a way to provide more housing choices. And actually, some of them may be smaller square footages, which then may mean that they're more affordable. Hopefully they're more affordable to build and those, those savings are passed on to a buyer if it's a buyer situation or in the rents, right? But to answer your question, I'm not sure what the current, um, so 80% of the area median income based on your household size, that is the marker for, um, moderate income, low and moderate income. So if you're below 80% your household income, then you, um, you need housing that's affordable and a lot of times. Um, I think that for, gosh, you know, I should know this. It's on the city website. If I had my, um, iPad, I could look it up real quick. It's, it's probably like 65 or 70,000 for a family of four. Um, you know, it's, it's on, we have, we have the income limits on this community development block grant page. Um, so they go up every year based on, you know, what's going on with, with, uh, incomes. And then there is also a fair market rent, which is not necessarily something we regulate, but the housing authority, uh, has housing choice vouchers that people that are, that low or moderate income, below 80%, they can get on a waiting list for. And, um, there, but the, the amount of rent that can be charged is sort of a limit based on the fair market rents. Those have been going up every year also because our rents have gone up, right? So, okay, so yep, household of four is 67,900 is the median household income. So I was, I was pretty close in guessing that. So a one person is 47,558. Eight person household is almost 90,000. So it, it fluctuates, but again, maybe households with those incomes could afford a house that's smaller, maybe a 1,200 square foot house instead of a 2,000 square foot house, either for owning or renting. It's hard to say. But this, again, isn't, we are hoping over the long term that more housing units and more variety of sizes and types and locations may, in the long term, mean that they'll be a little bit more affordable. So like in a neighborhood where you have an average house size of 2,400 square feet and then you have houses that are maybe 1,200 square feet, you would think that those would be more affordable, the lower square footage ones. And, um, I mean, location also plays into house prices. Well, new construction does, but yeah, I mean, it will be, but I, the other thing is there's supply and demand and market demand and their interest rates. There's a lot that of factors that go into house prices over time. Yep. We, we don't know. Right. I mean, this isn't, the state has other tools and we do, did have some affordable housing, um, land use law amendments in the code package, but they're not middle housing. They're different. So, um, yeah.
Right. There's no other comments?
Just, I've just got a quick question, Madam Chair. Uh, the, uh, it's, it's easy and it's, and it's, uh, kind of easy to blame the state for things and say, well, our hands are tied and we can't do this and so we're, it, and, and I know that it's, it's just tempting to do that, but I would like to see kind of, uh, emerging from this commission and from the city as a whole, our, our own feelings about what we want, uh, vis a vis housing and transportation and other things. I mean, it seems like we can kind of see what's coming in the future. Things have changed rapidly in the last just very few years. And those of who are, uh, uh, of us who are a certain age really see how different it is now than it was, uh, so many years ago, and it's happening a lot faster. So just to say, well, the state makes us do this, you know, it, it kind of sounds like a, it's a, it's a, it's a cop out a little bit. And it'd be nice for us to work more on what do we want, uh, for Albany, you know, and should it be, because I hear, I heard people tonight saying, well, you could hear them saying, I, I like my North Albany acreage, you know, and when we moved here and we wanted this big old place and so forth. And then, but they, at the same time, they say, well, we don't have, uh, uh, we don't have a public transportation, you know, and so we, these things don't pencil out, you know, you can't with, you can't have the big acreage and, and, and public transportation also. And so I, I mean, I, I just look forward to seeing a, an overall vision, kind of being developing about how we want this all to look for the future at the, at the city level, you know, at our level, instead of the state level.
Commissioner Gray, I appreciate you saying that. Some of the slides I have for Wednesday actually talk about housing need, our current housing inventory, our latest building permits. And it is pretty much single detached dwelling units or multi-dwelling units, apartments or detached housing. There's very little variety and even very little variety. And I don't have all the numbers, but that the sizes of the houses that we're seeing. So, um, the city did scale its STCPs for single detached dwelling units so that we can incentivize those that are smaller than 750 square feet and smaller than 1,250 square feet. So we reduce the price a little bit. But I mean, the, you know, with cottages, um, you know, the cottage cluster where you could maybe do two smaller houses, three small houses or, you know, whatever, whatever you wanted that fit on your lot. I mean, it is an opportunity. We did hear a lot, I mean, I'm glad you brought this up, that we have empty nesters that want to stay in their neighborhood, but there isn't anything in their neighborhood or, or close by that they can actually downsize into. Um, the mayor will tell you this, he, a lot of his clients, um, you know, they, they just don't want a big home. They want a one-story home. They're aging. You don't want stairs. Then there's the, um, you know, the first time home buyers or the, the young couples or the single people. And we just don't have very much diversity between the apartment building or the single detached. We have about 70% of our housing is single detached or manufactured homes. And then the rest is, is apartments with very little being duplex, triplexes and fourplexes. So it's kind of interesting. Or attached housing. So, um, and our building permits will show the same. We're starting to see interest in middle housing and it could be a boom for a little while, but I mean, I think it kind of ebbs and flows, but it might help provide some more housing choices in our market that is, you know, doesn't have a lot of housing diversity. And we also, the housing needs analysis showed that we need to provide needed housing that is affordable to everybody or choices that give people an opportunity to have affordable housing. And we're not providing that much in the, the market. So the kind of housing units that were recommended in our housing needs analysis were attached housing and smaller footprint housing. And a lot of the middle housing is hopefully going to provide that. I mean, cottages are limited in their square footage, for example. So we'll see.
So when talking about the affordability and does the city code allow for the, uh, 3D printed homes that are?
Well, that's Oregon State Building Code. The city uses Oregon State Building Code. I don't know. That'd be a question for a building official. I'm not sure. Um, you know, the state building code may be a little different than some other state building codes. Bill, Bill might know or Commissioner Reynolds may know. Um, I don't, I don't know, but I, I know, well, actually in Oregon, there, there are some 3D printed homes out, um, out in eastern Oregon. So yes, it must allow for it. So, yeah, sorry.
So this has been a great conversation and a great meeting. So if there's no other comments, I will call the meeting adjourned. And the next meeting is scheduled for June 3rd at 5:15. Thank you.